Forward, no one is to approach today is I repeat, no one is to approach today is. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to today's hearing on the fiscal 2026 preliminary budget for the New York City Economic Development Corporation. My name is Amanda Farias and I'm honored to be the chair of the committees, the Committee on Economic Development. We're also joined today by esteemed colleague, Councilmember Alexa Aviles. Today, we will be hearing from NYC EDC on the fiscal 2026 preliminary budget, including the Preliminary Capital Commitment Plan and updates on their fiscal 2024 investment projects. In addition to the NYC EDC capital projects, NYC EDC also manages capital projects for various other agencies. The agency also oversees much of the discretionary economic development investment projects, which involve advisory and financial assistance from EDC. Each one of these programs should support and be well-integrated with one another to properly execute the city's economic development and vital infrastructure goals. Today, we plan to examine to what extent this is occurring, where improvements can be made, and the overall feasibility of NYC EDC's capital and investment program. NYC EDC is the city's primary agent for economic development and their principal mandate is to encourage investment and to attract, retain, and create jobs in New York City. As such, this committee is interested in having a robust conversation about how NYC EDC's budget is laid out in this year's preliminary plan, connects to the larger job creation and economic development strategies of the city. One of the ways NYC EDC supports the growth of the city's economy and job market is through what it calls investment projects. These represent discretionary financial assistance largely from, in the form of tax breaks and tax-exempt bond financing. In fiscal 2024, there were 440 total active investment projects at a total cost of 293 million. Many of these projects represent investments made years or even decades ago under prior administrations. However, 20 of these projects were new in fiscal 2024 and represent a commitment of multi-year tax reductions worth roughly 31.7 million. I would like NYC EDC to update us on how the economic impact of these investment projects are calculated and to what degree the agency coordinates with other arms of the city, including OMB, to ensure that these impacts are reflected in our budget process. The fiscal 2026 Preliminary Capital Commitment Plan, which covers fiscal 2025 to 2029, includes 3.9 billion for NYC EDC. NYC EDC's 10-year capital plan includes 5.9 billion in fiscal 2026 to 2035. Today, I would like EDC to provide this committee with information regarding both revenue contributed by NYC EDC to the general fund and net revenue generated post contributions to the general fund. From fiscal 2019 to fiscal 2021, NYC EDC had negative net revenue with a positive 96 million in fiscal '22, and then revenue dropping by nearly two-thirds to 32.5 million and increasing slightly to 37.6 million in fiscal 2024. The committee would like to know what the reason for EDC struggling to come close to the peak of fiscal 2022's numbers are and what they can do to achieve greater increases. It is essential that the budget that we adopt is transparent, accountable, and reflective of the priorities and interests of the council and the people we represent. This hearing is a vital part of this process, and I expect that NYC EDC will be responsive to the questions and concerns of council members. I look forward to an active engagement with the administration over the next few months to ensure the upcoming fiscal 2026 adopted budget meets the goals the council has set out. I would like to thank Andrew Kimball and Jennifer Montalvo for coming here today and testifying. I would like to thank NYC EDC's staff, who have been consistently responsive to our many requests. We would not be able to analyze the city's budget at such a detailed level without your cooperation, so I thank you. I would also like to thank both my staff and the staff of Finance and Legislative Divisions for helping in preparing for this hearing. Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Committee Counsel.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Farias and members of the Economic Development Committee. I'm Andrew Kimball, President and CEO of the New York City Economic Development Corporation, and I'm here today with my Chief of Staff, Jennifer Montalvo. We appreciate your leadership as Chair of this committee, as well as that of your colleagues and the City Council's partners on major development projects such as ULP approvals for Willetts Point or Spark Kips Bay, or quality-of-life improvements such as the introduction of electric helicopters and ferry discounts for high school students. I'm glad to have the opportunity to update you on the progress we have made over the last year and provide a bird's-eye view of our work across the city. EDC is a mission-driven, not-for-profit organization that works to create a vibrant, inclusive, and globally competitive economy for all New Yorkers. In the third year of this administration, our mission and strategic priorities continue to underpin the city's recovery. Our work has helped New York City navigate a period of transformation, responding to the impacts of a pandemic and the challenges of our time, including changes to work patterns and industry, and our housing and affordability crisis, while continuing to build a robust and diversified economy that competes globally while creating opportunities for New Yorkers locally. I'm proud to say that in 2024, New York City reached record highs in employment and labor force participation. Our economy reached a new employment record with 4.8 million jobs and a 61.8% labor force participation rate, both all-time highs. New York City's thriving startup and entrepreneurial ecosystem continues to grow, with one in eight businesses in New York City started in the last 12 months. This astonishing statistic speaks to the importance of small businesses and entrepreneurs as the backbone of New York City's economy. From Sunset Park to the North Shore of Staten Island, from Hunts Point to Willetts Point, and from Midtown Manhattan to Jamaica, Queens, our city is showing its strength and optimism. New Yorkers are back at work. Our streets and plazas and parks are full of life. Our commercial districts exude an energy that you just don't feel in many other cities. Tourism is back and on track to hit an all-time high in 2025. To bolster the city's economy, we've continued to focus on high-wage, high-growth sectors, attracted job-creating businesses and academic institutions, and made substantial progress in reimagining and revitalizing commercial and industrial districts, driving office space modernization and activation, public realm improvements, industrial innovation, and reactivation of our waterways for commercial uses. And yes, of course, we continue to play an important role in addressing New York City's greatest need: creating housing across the boroughs. Through our capital program, we've channeled city capital towards projects that support and promote economic development and create strong communities for New Yorkers. For example, this year, we completed the renovation of four public libraries and broke ground on the renovation of the Bronx Museum, the largest contemporary art museum in New York City, with 100% free admission. Our business development team is working tirelessly to attract high-impact job-creating companies across innovative industries of the future. This year, OpenAI opened its first New York City office. Global investment firms Citadel and Citadel Securities announced they will serve as anchor tenants at 350 Park Avenue, which will serve as home to 6,000 jobs, and yogurt giant Chobani is locating its new headquarters at 360 Bowery. All of our projects and initiatives are guided by data and an analysis of the city's economy, which we continue to report monthly and which we shared in our inaugural State of the Economy Report in January. Our 2024 Impact Report, which you have in front of me, in front of you, provides additional details on our work. You can also learn more about our work in recent reports on academia in New York City and New York City's artificial intelligence advantage. EDC is committed to the success of industries critical to our city's current and future economy: tech, life sciences, and the green economy. New York City is a booming global tech hub with the second-largest technology workforce in the world. The sector has grown 32% over the last decade. Our programs and initiatives in partnership with investors, innovators, and academic institutions have moved this sector forward. AI is both a technology tool impacting every sector of the economy, from law to accounting to life sciences, but it's also an exploding technology subsector in and of itself. Recognizing artificial intelligence as a critical force in shaping the future, EDC is committed to securing NYC's leadership in AI and supporting AI sector growth and job creation, cultivating local talent, and ultimately advancing New York City's standing as a premier AI hub. To that end, in the end of January, EDC will issue an RFP to create an AI Nexus Hub. To provide workforce training and access to AI opportunities, we launched the EDC Startup Internship Program, that targeted, connecting CUNY students to dynamic roles at AI-first startups. And to improve AI literacy, we're piloting a new AI literacy program for librarians across New York City's libraries. The New York City Life Sciences community is launching dynamic new startups and leading scientific breakthroughs that are improving health outcomes and powerfully enhancing our basic quality of life. EDC's commitment to investing in life sciences has made the sector a cornerstone of the New York City's economy. Through the city's $1 billion LifeSci initiative, we're driving innovation in this multidisciplinary sector that unlocks modern therapeutics and lifesaving medicines, vaccines, diagnostics, and devices, all for the advances of humanity. The city's life sciences sector has grown into a citywide ecosystem with neighborhood-based clusters that each make a distinctive contribution. Similar to tech and life sciences, EDC sees the green economy as a major source of growth for New York City in the coming years and decades. Last February, we joined the administration to announce the release of the Green Economy Action Plan, a first-of-its-kind plan laying out a roadmap to growing the city's green economy. The plan invests in jobs and sectors that will help the city combat climate change and train and position New Yorkers, particularly those from environmentally disadvantaged communities, to benefit from the nearly 400,000 green-collar jobs in New York City by 2040. Underlying all of our work is a commitment to and investment in the development of New York City's greatest asset: its people. We do this by supporting diverse entrepreneurship, expanding workforce development, and improving access to MWDB firms. This work is at the heart of our mission and our projects and helps us ensure that all New Yorkers can participate in the industries of tomorrow. Diverse entrepreneurship is EDC's first equity pillar, and our initiatives aim to enhance diversity within three innovation industry sectors. EDC's Founder Fellowship supports a diverse community of New York City tech and green startup founder teams with much-needed access to resources and networks to help them grow their companies. We have had 250 Founder Fellowship participations, participants since 2022, and over $161 million increase in company valuation for those companies across their teams the last two years. The Venture Access Alliance is a coalition of venture capital investments, investors brought together by EDC, who believe New York City's diversity is its greatest strength and opportunity for growth, and have worked together to build an inclusive tech and venture ecosystem in New York City. Second pillar of our equity work is workforce development, creating the educational and talent pipeline so that all New Yorkers can participate in the city's growing innovation industries. Building on the foundation for a diverse talent pipeline into startups, we continue our partnership with Company Ventures and CUNY in 2024. Summer internship programs provides accessible pathways to tech careers for low-income college students. Our LifeSci NYC partnership program, excuse me, internship program continued strong in 2024, providing undergraduate and graduate students quality internships at pharmaceutical and biotech companies, digital health companies, research organizations, and startups, while offering curriculum and training support. Since the program's inception in 2018 has placed more than 1,000 students at over 200 companies. One of the great things we're seeing is that interns from the early years of this program now have their own companies and are hiring LifeSci interns. To advance a green economy workforce, EDC launched the NYC Waterfront Pathways Program to counter documented disparities in public procurement by increasing opportunities for minority-owned, women-owned, and disadvantaged business enterprises in the offshore wind and waterfront industries. EDC is preparing to select three economic mobility networks in the coming months, which will implement a workforce development strategy to foster long-term economic mobility in Hunts Point, Sunset Park, and East New York. These economic mobility networks will leverage EDC assets to expand employment and work-based learning opportunities for local residents, and expand local awareness and training for the city's innovation industries. Third pillar of our equity work focuses on MWBE utilization. Last year, EDC committed over $234 million to MWBE firms. To support the development and capacity building of city MWBE firms, EDC's Construct NYC program is designed to connect small to mid-size minority-woman-owned and otherwise disadvantaged business enterprises with exclusive opportunities to work on EDC projects through contracts of up to 3 million. Before I take you on a flyover of the harbor of the future, I'd like to briefly highlight some of EDC's procurement opportunities. We currently have procurement opportunities to support housing and commercial activation at the former Flushing Airport site, the East New York Industrial Business Zone, Gansavord Square, Coney Island West, and 100 Gold Street. The Harbor of the Future is a bold plan to reimagine New York City's waterfront to fuel 21st-century growth and innovation. This brief presentation puts the breadth of our work into context across the city and highlights our mission and strategy in action. This vision includes historic investments to build our future-focused industries, utilizing them as vehicles for job growth, economic diversification, and equitable pathways to prosperity. A new, reinvigorated use of the city's waterfront space will create 53,000 temporary and permanent jobs, generate 95 billion in economic impact, offer a hub for connectivity and transportation, make New York City more sustainable and resilient for the future, allow us to reimagine major spaces and assets, and bring us a step closer to building a modern 21st-century city that continues to capitalize on our waterways and waterfront assets. Along the North Shore of Staten Island, we're building a vibrant, mixed-use waterfront community that will explore new kinds of sustainable urban design and job creation. This plan outlines a roadmap for a clear and unified vision for the future of Staten Island's North Shore, with $400 million of city investment, creating over 20 acres of public space, more than 7,500 families sustaining jobs, over 2,000 housing options for all income levels, and 3.8 billion in economic impact over 30 years. The centerpiece of the action plan is 20 acres of new waterfront open space from Stapleton to St. George, on par with Hudson River Park or the Brooklyn waterfront, that improves the quality of life for North Shore residents and unlocks nearby private investment and housing and commercial space. Along the West Shore of Staten Island, EDC is working with private partners to make available hundreds of acres of underutilized land for the offshore wind industry and other large-scale manufacturing opportunities. On the South Brooklyn waterfront, EDC manages approximately 200 acres of waterfront assets, including the Brooklyn Army Terminal, BAT. BAT is home to over 100 businesses and approximately 4,000 employees. A key initiative of the administration's historic Green Economy Action Plan is the Climate Innovation Hub at BAT. The hub will bring business development incubation and acceleration to a 4 million-square-foot campus and continue to grow Sunset Park as a center for clean tech innovation, manufacturing, local entrepreneurship, and workforce opportunities. The MAID Campus at Bush Terminal is a center for artisans, advanced manufacturing, and media production. The campus will synergize modern facilities, amenities, and well-designed public space. In December, we were thrilled to open the first 220,000-square-foot industrial building as part of the MAID redevelopment. Last June, in partnership with the city, state, and Equinor, we announced the start of construction to transform the South Brooklyn Marine Terminal into the nation's largest offshore wind port. SBMT is poised to deliver 810 megawatts of renewable electricity to the city, providing enough energy to power 500,000 homes, advance the green transition to renewable energy, bolstering the city's national leadership in the offshore wind industry, and serve as an operations and maintenance hub for Empire Wind One. Equity and economic mobility are at the center of our offshore wind work, ensuring that diverse businesses and diverse workforce are prepared to best participate in this opportunity. Last May, after 50 years of dysfunctional government and disinvestment as a result of the ineffective city-state-and-port-authority tri-party agreement, EDC assumed full control of the Brooklyn Marine Terminal. Working with local elected officials and stakeholders, we're working on a transformational plan for this 122-acre site that will spur economic development and job growth in Brooklyn and beyond, develop a modernized 21st-century maritime port to bolster the Blue Highway and a micro-distribution network, removing trucks from New York roadways and neighborhoods, and create a mixed-use community that provides improved access to open space and the waterfront while creating thousands of units of housing that help address the city's greatest need. Governor's Island is home to the New York Climate Exchange, a 400,000-square-foot campus dedicated to research, education, and public programs addressing the global climate crisis. Climate Exchange is being built by the city in partnership with the Trust for Governor's Island and its Climate Exchange Consortium, which is led by SUNY Stony Brook. And of course, the Brooklyn Navy Yard has become an international model for successful transformation of outdated industrial spaces into a center of modern manufacturing and a home to startups. The Navy Yard is in the midst of an ambitious master plan that will nearly double its size in the next 10 years. These three sites are collaborating to create the Harbor Climate Initiative, three mission-aligned public entities with sites along New York Harbor connected by NYC Ferry, the Trust for Governor's Island, EDC's Brooklyn Army Terminal, and the Brooklyn Navy Yard, to make New York City the global capital of climate innovation. These three campuses totaling 600 acres and 10 million square feet of building space were first built as military bases to defend our country at home and abroad, and are now being reimagined to tackle perhaps our most existential challenge of today and the future: climate change. The collaborative will facilitate research, education, workforce training, and space for companies to grow, as well as an opportunity for the piloting of new technologies. These sites will support the creation of 5,000 permanent jobs, educate and trade 2,100 students, and generate $55 billion of economic impact for our city. Just last month, we announced the next phase of ambitious, ambitious new vision for Coney Island that will deliver 1,500 new homes and invest in the reconstruction of the historic Wriggleman Boardwalk. In addition, the city will invest in new streets, sewers, and public realm improvements, including a $42 million renovation of the Abe Stark Sports Center. Coney Island West redevelopment advances the administration's commitment to forward-looking housing projects to make New York City the best, most affordable place to raise a family. Moving away from the waterfront for a moment to an important neighborhood hub in East New York, EDC is working to improve the Broadway Junction Station complex and support the East New York Industrial Business Zone. At Broadway Junction, we're working alongside MTA with a $500 million public investment to deliver accessibility upgrades to the Broadway Junction Station complex, an additional investment to activate underutilized public spaces around the subway complex, improve street safety, and create new open space. We are also working to strengthen the historic industrial hub and secure its future as a thriving employment center through RFPs for several industrial sites. Coming back to the East River, EDC controls two of the city's heliports, the East 34th Street heliport and the Downtown Manhattan heliport. At the end of 2023, we released a bold new vision to transform DMH to capitalize on new technologies like electric vehicle takeoff and landing aircraft, EV tolls, and create a first-of-its-kind hub for sustainable transportation and deliveries as part of the city's Blue Highway network. We recently announced the selection of Downtown Skyport as the new operator of DMH. As part of our new operator agreement, the city will see increased revenues as well as investment to upgrade the heliport's infrastructure to support EV tolls as well as last-mile maritime freight delivery. At East 34th Street, our operator has also agreed to invest in new heliport infrastructures to support EV tolls. These agreements will create the needed infrastructure to allow New York City to become one of the first heliports in the nation to support EV tolls, greening our skies while reducing ambient noise. Resiliency against flooding and overall effects of climate change is at the core of our work, partnering with city agencies like DEP and DDC to build and manage the city's waterfront infrastructure. Lower Manhattan is the financial capital of the nation and one of the most important areas of commerce in the world. We've seen how vulnerable this area is to climate change and the impacts of increasing storm activity. To protect Lower Manhattan from rising sea levels, EDC is in the design phase of the last section of Lower Manhattan Coastal Resiliency Project, which covers the Five Days Seaport area. This is only one of many resiliency initiatives we're working on with DEP and DEC underway across our city. In Spark Kips Bay, we are transforming an entire city block into a state-of-the-art and first-of-its-kind education, job, innovation hub focused on life sciences and health tech. Last month, the City Council voted to approve the Science Park and Research Campus, Spark Kips Bay, and Innovation East Projects, an historic win for New York City's thriving life sciences industry and broader economy. The project is backed by $1.6 billion investment from the city and the state, as well as an expected $2 billion in private investment. The project will create over 3,100 permanent jobs and generate $42 billion of economic impact while building pathways to the life sciences and health sectors. On one side of the campus, there will be three CUNY schools focused on public health and life sciences careers, as well as a DOE high school with a STEM focus on life sciences and health. On the other side of the campus will be over 1 million square feet of private biotech space, as well as critical public health facilities for health and hospitals and the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner. The public-private sides of this campus will strategically incorporate workforce development strategies to ensure opportunities for our New York City students in their careers of the future. Moving back across the harbor, Long Island City is a neighborhood that has seen enormous growth over the last decade and has emerged as a vibrant live-work-learn-play community. The neighborhood has experienced some growing pains around housing, open space, community resources, and infrastructure. To address these issues, EDC is working with the Department of City Planning and a local council member to conduct an extensive community engagement process, which will guide the long-term vision for one of the city's fastest-growing neighborhoods. Cornell Tech, founded in 2012, is a groundbreaking center for technology research and education on Roosevelt Island. Its creation was a key strategy to transform New York City into the second-largest global tech ecosystem, employing over 360,000 New Yorkers, 7% of the city's workforce. Our partnership with Cornell Tech continues to grow. We are working with them on growth strategies right now and programs with graduates that have brought nearly 200 startups to the city. This partnership is an example of EDC's strategy of finding piloting opportunities to scale urban innovation on city-controlled assets. The East Midtown Greenway is a major public realm project that brought us one step closer to the grand vision to close the loop with the Manhattan waterfront greenway and provide New Yorkers with continuous waterfront open space around Manhattan. As part of this work, EDC is rebuilding the pier at 107th Street and repairing and reconstructing portions of Bobby Wagner Walk esplanade from 94th Street to 124th Street along the Harlem River, and we're working on over 80 miles of greenways with parks and DOT across the city. At Willetts Point, we are making history through a once-in-a-lifetime public-private partnership to build a mixed-use neighborhood from whole cloth. This project includes 2,500 units of affordable housing, the city's largest affordable housing project in over 40 years, and a $750 million privately-financed, world-class, all-electric soccer stadium for the New York City Football Club. The stadium, housing, a new school, and dedicated open space will generate 16,000 jobs and $6.1 billion in economic impact for the city. Jumping back inland, earlier this year, the mayor and EDC unveiled El Centro-Kingsbridge, an ambitious new plan for the future of Kingsbridge Armory, to redevelop the, to redevelop the historic and long-underutilized site and create new economic opportunities in the Bronx. Phase one of the project envisions a vibrant, mixed-use development with a state-of-the-art event venue space, sports field for local youth academies, cultural and cultural space, and over 25,000 square feet of dedicated community space, an educated, an educational facility focused on workforce development, and more. Phase two, 450 units of permanently affordable rental housing will be adjacent to the armory. The redevelopment is expected to generate $2.6 billion of economic impact over the next 30 years, creating 3,000 construction jobs and 3,600 permanent jobs. The Bronx is also home to the Hunts Point Food Distribution Center, FDC, the city's primary food distribution hub. The FDC is spread over 200 acres and includes three major cooperatives: fish, meat, and produce, as well as other major food manufacturers and distributors. EDC is working on a number of major upgrades with its partners at the FDC, including a massive redevelopment of the produce market that will take over 1,000 trucks a day off of fossil fuel generators. The FDC's waterfront access also creates a strategic opportunity to develop a Blue Highway node at the distribution center, allowing for waterway linkage between the Brooklyn Marine Terminal and food distributors at Hunts Point via barge service and marine terminal operation. The Harbor of the Future showcases our assets, their interconnectedness, and their position as an integral part of New York City's vast waterfront. The city was established upon our vibrant waterways, and those waterways remain a vital tool to support the city's creation of a sustainable Blue Highway network to move freight from our roadways to our waterways. We're evaluating potential sites for micro-mobility and Blue Highway landings while also studying how we can utilize New York City's, New York City Ferry's 25 landings to move goods across the city. Currently, freight is almost entirely delivered via trucks, which clog our roadways, contribute to air pollution, and negatively impact our communities. To alleviate these problems, we need to remove trucks from our streets. We envision waterfront landings throughout the boroughs, allowing goods to be delivered directly by water from one borough to another, from warehouses in New Jersey, removing trucks from our street. Delivering on Mayor Adams' vision of a modern and connected harbor is integral to EDC's mission and strategic priorities, and delivering on a cleaner, greener future for New York City is fundamental to supporting a modern, sustainable city. We're proud to do this work in partnership with all of you, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. We welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the very thorough testimony that included really great visuals. Always appreciate that. I'd like to start off by acknowledging we've also been joined online by Councilmember Riley and Councilmember Gutierrez. I'd like to start off with discussing the economic impact of the investment projects. State law requires that NYC IDA undertake a cost-benefit analysis before providing any discretionary tax breaks. This evaluation must show that the tax break will have a net positive impact on the city's budget, so every approved IDA investment should have a positive tax revenue impact on the city. How much in tax revenue impact do you think IDA projects are having in FY '25? How much in tax revenue impact do you think IDA projects are having in FY '25?
Well, let me just start by saying there's a return-to-city analysis, which is similar to what the state legislature requires for IDA build for every one of our development projects that we go through with the city's OMB. And that analysis includes a projection of job creation, direct and indirect. It includes an analysis of overall economic impact, so goods sold, ripple effect on the local economy, and an analysis of tax return to the city. All of those projects, all the projects we undertake, otherwise OMB doesn't allow us to undertake them, have a positive impact in terms of return to city and net positive tax revenue that far exceeds the value of any tax break or capital investment.
Do we have, like, an estimate on...
I can get that for you in terms of just pure tax revenue. I'd be happy to follow up on that.
Great. I asked the OMB director if their revenue estimates included these calculations. Do you know if they do? Does IDA share their analysis with OMB's revenue team? Do you think it's a problem if not incorporating your economic and tax impacts into their
The question is, does the budgetary director assume those tax...
If we know for a fact that the OMB is incorporating their...
In future tax projections?
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, typically, those tax revenues come in years after the investment, because whatever the investment is, takes a while to build, in some case, many years, and then you start to leverage positive tax revenue after that. You're typically looking at these projects over somewhere between 20- and 40-year time range. I have a number. This is for fiscal year '24 of $151 million in tax revenues on IDA projects.
Thank you. So, for example, thank you for that response. The three EMCOR projects announced have a tax benefit cost of $142 million but a total tax benefit of $1.3 billion over a 20-year period. This works out to be a net positive impact of about $60 million per year. Do we know where that shows up in the city's budget?
Again, these would be years in advance. So, as an example, there's a project on Water Street. Some of the capital work has been done on it already that's resulting from this program. Some is to come. They will then finish that capital work. They will lease the building. You know, you're looking at full occupancy within a few years, and then you get full tax revenue. Does OMB count those tax revenues three, or four, or five years out? I'm not sure the answer to that question. But certainly, we have to demonstrate to them that it has positive tax revenue that exceeds the initial investment. So, you know, the numbers that you put out about the value of the incentive versus the projected return, I think it was 10 times value.
Yeah, I just think for us, what we're always trying to manage is making sure that there's intercommunication, right? And that what the right hand is saying, the left hand is saying, and both agree upon, just so when we're looking at those assumptions, whether or not OMB agrees with them, or whether or not the work you folks are doing is calculated into the future projection. So, I appreciate the response. We've also been joined by Councilmember Russler, that I saw come in and step out shortly. More than half of the new investment projects in fiscal 2024 were for educational or social service-oriented projects. These are not the types of projects one traditional considers economic development. How do you evaluate the appropriateness of these investments as an economic development agency?
Well, first of all, I believe firmly that educational investments are a key part of economic development in the city. We put out a study, which I really encourage everybody to check out, on the state of academia in the city. And just in the colleges and universities alone here, they generate $35 billion a year of economic impact and employ over 200,000 people. So, it is a key part of our economy, just in terms of their daily operations and functions, but also in terms of the people that they graduate. Just bear with me for a second, because this is one of my favorite stats, but since 2021, over 500,000 recent college graduates, university graduates, have moved to New York, and they tend to stay here over 10 years. There was recent census updates that just came out that show our population growing for the first time. A lot of that is foreign immigration and migration, but there's also internal domestic migration into the city, and that tends to be very young and highly educated people. There are another 500,000 students in colleges and universities right now. That's a million people, college and university, recent or current. And then you've got, of course, the buildup to all of that starts at, you know, pre-K and all the way through the system and high school. So, we're really proud of the fact that many of our economic development projects incorporate DOE programs as well as college programs, particularly CUNY. And really, the project that speaks to our values the most is the Spark project, where we're taking three CUNY schools, a two-year, a four-year, and a graduate school, incorporating them into one building with a STEM high school focused on public health and biotech careers on half of the campus. On the other half of the campus will be a million square feet of private biotech and two city agencies. All of those things will be wrapped together into one coherent economic development strategy, so those students are stepping into internships, apprenticeships, training programs, so that they get into these high-wage, high-growth sectors of the future. So, going back to your question about IDA and build, so we have a tax-exam bond finance program called Build. It is primarily focused on not-for-profits, a lot of whom come are private schools or charter schools. And we've done a number of those projects in recent years. And again, I think those are all critical to our economic development future in the city.
And are there any metrics that you include in the evaluations beyond the economic
I certainly think that those metrics, jobs, economic impact, long-term tax return, really important. Another one, I would say, another couple, and I talked to it a little bit in my testimony, is diverse entrepreneurship. People ask me, what are the biggest challenges the city faces right now? By far, it is the housing crisis. I would put, as second, is diverse entrepreneurship. One of the reasons young people want to be here is not just for the industry options, but for the rich cultural diversity of the city. And if we lose young people of color because they want to be entrepreneurs in some other city, that is a massive loss. Cities like Atlanta are doing great on diverse entrepreneurship. We are doing much better, I think, in part because of the programs that we're putting in place at EDC. That's one. The second, I would say, and EDC hasn't done as much on until the last couple of years, is creating these local employment networks. So, Councilmember Aviles has been a fervent advocate for her community and wanting to see more direct lines for impact for local residents. And so, part of the economic mobility network that we've introduced there, or we are in the process of introducing there, and in Hunts Point, we also have a significant number of assets in East New York, is developing a network of local not-for-profits that will work with us on pre-screening and placement from the local community. Even without that, and we recently did an analysis that we'll be preparing to share with you soon with the Sunset Park annual report that we plan to put out now on an annual basis, it'll show that a very significant portion, close to one-third of all of the workers at the Brooklyn Army Terminal, as an example, our highest employment site in Sunset Park, come from the surrounding community. So, where the people are getting the jobs don't always come in those return-from-city investments, and we want to make sure that we are doing the best job we possibly can to create job pathways for local residents. It's not just the right thing to do for the communities we serve, but it's smart economic development, because people who have a short commute or walk to work are much more likely to stay in those jobs.
And in terms of watching the metrics or looking at the economic impacts, the local economic impact of some of this, are we also evaluating how the local hire, for example, or the education piece that we've created, impacts working with the local community organizations and nonprofits that impacts the local hire, and what that's actually doing in terms of, at the rate that we're developing in the city or some of the projects that we're rolling out? I think time and time again, we're in a constant dialogue around how do we build faster, but how do we also ensure that we're building union or including the unionized workforce, but also making sure we're getting the lowest cost, most efficient cost, you know, per build? Are we looking at metrics that way, or how are we evaluating project by project?
Yeah. I mean, it's, yeah, it's hard to, if you can't measure something, it's hard to know where you are. And so, we are doing a better job at measuring, and that goes to some of the data I just talked about with local folks being employed at the Brooklyn Army Terminal. There's similar data around Hunts Point, as an example. Your question about, you know, good-paying jobs and union jobs, also at the forefront of what we do, the vast majority of our work is prevailing wage work when it comes to construction. For the first time ever, EDC has entered into project labor agreements on multiple large projects. These are projects that tend to have city, state, federal dollars in them, as well as private. So, some of the examples there are Willett's Point. Infrastructure work is being built on a PLA, as is the stadium. The Spark project, both the public side and the private side, two separate PLAs. Up at Kingsbridge Armory, we've committed to doing a PLA, and at the Brooklyn Marine Terminal, we plan to do a PLA as well. And... Say it again? And Hunts Point, we've committed to a PLA as well on the $650 million Food Produce Center. Yeah, and SBMT also.
Great. We look forward to hearing about all of those PLAs as they progress. I'd like to shift over to NYC ferries. In early 2015, the de Blasio administration announced the establishment of the citywide ferry system. The intent was to connect waterfront communities throughout New York City. As you may remember, my mother is a huge fan of the ferry system, and I have a few questions regarding our NYC ferries and follow-up from last year, because if I don't ask about it, she'll ask about it. The ferry saw its highest-ever average monthly ridership of 827,000 in the first four months of fiscal 2025. The trend of increasing ridership has continued since coming out of COVID. Does EDC expect the ridership to plateau eventually?
I hope not.
Me, too.
You know, kudos to the past administration for standing up NYC Ferry. When we came in, partly because of COVID and partly because there had previously been a commitment to only charge what the MTA charges across the board, the ferry service was really in financial crisis. We're really proud that we have brought some more financial stability to that. Part of that is that one-time riders now pay $4.75. If you're buying a 10-pack or more, it's the same rate as bus or subway. As you know, thanks to your leadership and the committee's leadership, there is now a discount program for high school students. We were able to reduce the per-passenger subsidy 30% at the same time as we hit record highs in ridership, which we're noting. We're continually looking to increase ridership, to also increase the number of folks who have access to our Fair Fairs program, Half Price. There are now 20,000 New Yorkers participating in that program, and you'll be glad to know that I believe it's your mother's route, the Soundview Route, has another famous rider, which is the new deputy mayor for economic development and housing, Adolpho Carrion. So, the two of them should lobby together.
What does EDC attribute to the increases in ridership to be?
I think that during COVID, New Yorkers were looking for alternatives, outdoor alternatives, frankly, to commute, and we saw that, numbers increasing coming out of COVID. I think that has only increased since then with the good stewardship of our operator hornblower and the support of EDC in that, with improved marketing campaigns around it. So, I think all of those are factors.
EDC recently expanded the ferry system to include the St. George Route. Are there any plans to expand the ferries to include more locations in NYC?
Yeah, it's been a few years since we brought on St. George. That was before my time and before the Ferry Forward Program, as we've been digging ourselves out of some of the financial strains that I just mentioned. We love it that New Yorkers love NYC Ferry, that the council loves NYC Ferry. We want to continue to work with you on growing NYC Ferry in smart ways. We have had lots of requests for expansion, and we look forward to continuing that dialogue over the course of the year. We do not have specific plans today for expansion. It is quite expensive anytime you add a route, and so, we've got to balance that with what is the enthusiasm for it and the demand for it.
Sure. Outside of adding maybe more landings throughout the routes, have we expanded any more to the fleet? Do we plan to expand any more boats to the fleet?
We don't plan to expand boats to the fleet. We have a good number of boats today. The biggest action we're taking with our fleets is converting all the engines to be able to take biodiesel. There is a movement now internationally and nationally to try to incorporate electric ferries into fleets, and we applied for a very significant federal grant. Unfortunately, we did not get it. It was at the same time that we were successful at getting a big grant for the Brooklyn Marine Terminal, so we got one and didn't get the other. We will continue to apply for those funds, but that really requires a whole-new ferry. And, you know, as batteries get bigger, more efficient, and able to really move boats, I think they'll be more and more appropriate for New York Harbor, where the tidal impacts are pretty intense, and so, you need to have real power on those engines. But we would like to incorporate those over time. Certainly, if we were to expand stops, there may be a need in the future for acquiring more boats.
I do think part of the, you know, the goal for us should also be making sure that we're adding to the fleet over a course of years, just to make it a more reliable commuter service. I think right now, sometimes it does feel as if folks can't rely as often on the ferry system, if it's every 45 to 55 minutes to get a vessel to get you to your location. So, I just say that in the interest of folks like my mom, who love the ferry, but know that if they're just three minutes off, they're going to have to find another way to get to work.
Appreciate that.
And then, just on the note of you saying it's somewhat, you know, expensive or costly for expansion, have you folks, do you folks have an idea, or have you folks looked at what the city subsidy, EDC, would need to request for operating or capital cost if the ferry system were to expand?
I think that would certainly have to be part of the conversation if the ferry service was to expand. It is subsidized today, just to be clear. So, there's a per-passenger subsidy that is about $8.50 per passenger. It was about $13.50 when I got to EDC three and a half years ago, so it's come down substantially. But $8.50, you know, times a lot of riders is a lot of money. And so, there is a subsidy today, just to be clear, like all mass transit, and if the ferry service was to expand, that would go up.
The ferry system in fiscal 2023 hit 96% on-time performance. In fiscal 2024, it was at 91%. How is the ferry system on-time performance performing so far in fiscal year '25?
I think it's in the same range. You know, what you don't get is sort of mechanical failure, signal failure that you might get on an AG subway system. What you get is impacts from weather. And so, you know, particularly in high-wind, high-sea days, that can, you know, slow down service and impact those on-time service times.
Would you say that that's relatively what's impacting the performance timing generally?
Yes.
Does EDC have plans for the ferry to come at any given point to 30-minute intervals beyond the 45 or 55 that we have now?
No plans that are imminent, but certainly, you know, looking way down the road, would one like to see a ferry system that had even shorter intervals? Absolutely.
Back in March of 2023, as you mentioned in your testimony, my bill, Intro 236, was passed. The bill expanded contracted ferry service at reduced costs for city high school students. Have we seen an increase in ridership in high school students since we spoke last year?
We have seen an increase in ridership. I will get back to on the exact percent, but it's about 1,000 high school students that have taken advantage of the discounted service. Obviously, you've gotten, you know, you have a captured audience, in a sense, with the Harbor School on Governor's Island. I think we're seeing more students take it along the other routes as well.
And are there any... And are there any complaints that jump out immediately? Are you folks, that you've heard about the ferry from riders?
I'm sorry, about the ferry from?
From riders.
From Rikers?
Riders, like ferry riders.
Other complaints?
Any complaints?
I think your, your, your question about more, you know, shorter intervals between ferries is certainly one that we see. But overwhelmingly, the feedback we get is, is very positive, certainly in the summer months when you've got spikes like on Saturdays and Sundays when people come out. Sometimes there are lines for the ferry at certain stops. You know, typically, you're getting on, if you don't get that first boat, you're getting on the second boat. So I, I'm sure on some of those Saturdays and Sundays, you know, people would like to see additional boats added.
Okay, thank you. I have a bunch more questions, but I'm going to break for some members. And I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Salamanca.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. How are you, Mr. President? I, I want to start, you know, by just stating the facts of the good working relationship that my office has with EDC. It's appreciated, and I wanted to just say thank you for the open lines of communication. I represent the Hunts Point, where I have the Hunts Point Produce Markets, produce meat and fish, and over 700 businesses there as well. I'm excited about the, the Blue Highways project that we're working on now with the closure of the floating jail. Can you give us a, a status of where we're at with the, the Blue Highways?
Yeah, appreciate that. And Blue Highways is, is, is very top of mind. I'm spending a significant portion of my days on it now. Between the work we're doing on the Brooklyn Marine Terminal as one of the key nodes, we have a MARAD grant of $5 million where we're looking at five other stops to deploy dollars. Brooklyn, Manhattan, Queens, the Bronx. Then there are the two locations on the Hunts Point Peninsula. The work that you know of that we're, we're looking at with the Fish Market and FDM, as well as where the prison barge location is, that could be a outstanding transloading point for perishable goods in containers being barged from the Brooklyn Marine Terminal. I am hopeful, working with you, in the coming weeks, we're going to take some major steps forward on that. We're also working with the private sector, UPS, Prologis, FedEx, Amazon, to encourage, support, prod where necessary, folks to take a closer look at the use of the waterways. There are some promising signs of those with significant warehouse distribution centers in the Jersey side finally realizing that the cost of having trucks paying tolls, getting stuck in traffic on the bridges, much less fouling the air in our neighborhoods, is leading them to seriously consider moving goods by water.
All right. I'm looking forward to that. The Hunts Point Produce Market, we are, they're going through a phase now where they are going to, in terms of remodeling or building a new facility for, from their antiquated facility. There are concerns about the amount of acres that they have and the possibility that EDC may want to take certain acres of land and utilize it for another business to move in. And there's pushback on that. Can you speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we've been working with them for years, as you know. And thanks to support, you know, from you, from the mayor, there's $130 million in the project. That was matched by the governor. And then there's $110 million federal grant. As you know, EDC is, for the first time, also pursuing a loan, a federal RIF loan, to close the gap because the Produce Market Co-op preferred to not work with a third-party private developer. We are making very good headway at building a much more efficient plan for the site that both embraces rail, so getting more trucks off the, off the road, eliminating 1,000 trucks from fossil fuel generators. Recently, the Co-op has brought to my intention their interest in having some additional parking space. And so we're going to have those conversations, and I'm, I'm happy to consider that. But EDC is plowing a lot of time and resources into this project. And so part of the scenario and part of our agreement with the Co-op had always been that there would be some amount of space that would come back to EDC that we could put back out on the market for additional cold storage space. Just on cold storage, and, you know, your district is such an exception citywide because you have a lot of cold storage, but less than 5% of all the cold storage in the entire region is in the city of New York. It's in New Jersey, it's in Westchester, it's Long Island. So what does that mean? Trucks coming from everywhere. Hunts Point is obviously an exception to that. We would like to build more, more cold storage on that take-back space as part of the produce deal.
All right. We'll, we'll continue to have conversations on that. Lastly, I need your help. We, my office has constantly, throughout the years, we've allocated funding for the Fish Market, for example, and, and the, and the meat market. And many times, we've had the situation where they may need a new facade, and they may quote it at a certain price. And then the budget comes, the council allocates that funding. And then after the funding has been allocated and they go through their process on the designs, we find, we figure out that it costs, we, it's a different price tag than what we were quoting. How can, how can you, EDC, help the markets when they're requesting funding from the council to ensure that they're giving us accurate numbers so that we can fund the project in its entirety? We don't have to go back and forth with getting the funding from another budget.
Appreciate the question. And, you know, I, I think we have the team in place and the trust in place with all the Co-ops that if they work with us on the front end, we can properly project what the cost will be realistically. Because as you know, even, even in the best of times, from the moment you allocate capital dollars to the day it gets spent can be a number of years. And so you have inflation, you know, and in some cases, you have insane inflation like we've had the last few years. So that, that is one reason. Another reason that this was a particular problem that I inherited and have been trying to work on with you, and you've rightly been frustrated with at times, is that during the COVID period, all of our capital funding was frozen. So that was like another stretch of time. So when you came out of that, you were even farther behind between the point the money was allocated and the time was going to get spent. So I appreciated that you have added dollars. I appreciated that you've worked with us to consolidate some of those projects so we get projects going again. And I think we're making real headway.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Restler, followed by Aviles.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair. And it's good to see you, President Campbell, Jennifer. Thank you for being with us today and for your hard work on behalf of New Yorkers. I have a few questions of a more parochial nature. Firstly, I'm very concerned about downtown Brooklyn and the weakness of our office market. I looked at a, a report recently that showed downtown Brooklyn rents, office rents are higher than lower Manhattan, which I found perplexing. But I have some guesses on why that may be, but still found it bizarre. And, no, while I am generally supportive of conversions to residential where it makes sense, I'm worried that we're going to, if we convert all of the office space away in downtown Brooklyn, we're going to lose an opportunity for really good jobs that we should have in our community. And with the higher educational institutions like NYU, City Tech, there should, this should be a hub for entrepreneurship. And yet, we see 50, 60, 70, 80% vacancy rates in the key downtown Brooklyn office buildings. So is this on your radar? How can we work together to try to develop some smart economic opportunity and economic development strategies for downtown Brooklyn that leverages the assets we have and maximizes the space that's available to us?
It's 100% on my radar screen, and I think we're very aligned in wanting to make sure that we build a robust commercial scene in downtown Brooklyn. We absolutely have to. There may be some instances with some buildings, and we should go through a list together, where, you know, you can convert partially in order to jumpstart the other part of the building going. But there should be commercial at its core of the strategy. I know you've been speaking with Regina Meyer about this, I have as well, and be happy to meet with the two of you together to figure out how we can do more. You know, Metro Tech should be much more of a college hub. I'm optimistic about the new leadership at NYU, particularly a tandem with coming up with creative strategies. You can just imagine, you know, that plaza filled with both, you know, entrepreneurs, small businesses, and college students, and really creating a special ecosystem. So I'd love to work with you on that.
Great. I, you know, it's, I'm old enough to remember, you're old enough to remember, you worked, did you work on the rezoning in downtown Brooklyn? You did.
Yes, I did.
So, you know, that rezoning was sold to our community as primarily being the third major, you know, economic hub for New York City. The very first building opened last year, there was a commercial building, since the rezoning in 20 years, everything that's been built has been residential. And already, those guys have come to me to talk about a conversion, right, to residential. So that's where I, I just, I, I, my, I'm just frustrated. And so I would love to work with you to actually find some positive paths forward. It's been a long, long road. EDC was involved in finally opening the first park in downtown Brooklyn 20 years after the rezoning. We just opened the first school in downtown Brooklyn 20 years after the rezoning this September. You know, I spend too much of my damn time trying to make sure that the promises that were made in the second term of the Bloomberg administration are followed through on today, which gets me to my next question, which is that EDC has graciously been leading the way on Box Street Park. It's only 85% of the park's space that we're building out because the MTA still hasn't gotten rid, it still won't, refuses to leave from 15% of the park that they keep their vehicles on and refuse, the emergency vehicles that they refuse to relocate. But for 85% of the parkland that we are very close to getting ready to break ground on, it looks like as a result of EPA, additional EPA testing, we have a small funding gap. This is approximately a $30 million project. There's a funding gap that we'll get a final number on by the end of the month, but we think is between $1 and $2 million. So it, small percent of the total project. Do you think this is a, this is something that EDC can self-fund?
Let me get up to speed on the project and, and let's talk offline.
Okay. It would be enormously helpful if you can. The best case scenario right now is a summer 2028 completion. I am now, as I'm sure my colleagues are, thinking about what projects can we get done before they kick us out of this building, which is already frustrating to be thinking about, but it's where we're at, and we want to make sure that we're laser focused on getting it done. And then, last thing I want to ask about is probably the topic that we agree on the least, which is helicopters. So, as you know, my constituents hate all of the helicopters, and, and the chair knows very well, that, you know, pervade our community and cause enormous noise and environmental disruptions. We've been increasingly looking at analyses that have been shared with our office that do not believe that the lower Manhattan helipad will be able to accommodate electric helicopters because of the intensity of the wind in that area. Is this something that you all have looked at? Do you think that electric helicopters are a viable solution at that site? Or is this on your radar?
Absolutely, and, and we tested it. Over a year ago, we had two different EV tolls do a test flight and fly in the harbor between Brooklyn Bridge, Governor's Island, and downtown Manhattan heliport. So absolutely, we think that EV tolls can be transformational in terms of the experience for New Yorkers. They are incredibly quiet, and we're very aware that New Yorkers do not appreciate the ambient sound from, from helicopters. So we are working very hard to address that. The EV toll charging equipment will be in place, thanks to investments from our new operator, so that the minute that the FAA approves the use of EV tolls, which we expect will be within the next two years, they will be ready to begin to implement.
I will conclude, but I will just say, I feel like the timeline on, on these magical electric helicopters has been sliding for, I don't know how long, but I imagine we'll get there someday. I, I will say, and I think the chair has been a, a great leader here, that they have the promise of having dramatically less impacts, negative impacts on our communities. The noise impacts are just so severe that people can't have a conversation while they sit on their stoop in their backyard on, in Brooklyn Bridge Park. And the environmental impacts are, are similarly just, you know, troubling. You know, one helicopter idling is the equivalent of 40 cars. And we just, I don't see why we facilitate it on city-owned property so that tourists can get a view from Brooklyn Bridge Park from above. It's perfectly pretty from, from down below. So I appreciate your pushing on the electric, on the EV tolls. I hope we can get there as quickly as possible. And I don't think we should have any of the, the fossil fuel guzzling helicopters in the sky until we do. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We've also been recognized by Councilmember Nurse, and I'd like to turn for questions to Councilmember Aviles.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you. Good to see you all. Every day.
Every day.
Every day. I want an office space in the EDC property, by the way. It'll make it easier for Mikel, who has to chase me. Oh, so many questions, so little time. I guess, I'd love to, Andrew, you mentioned in your testimony regarding Long Island City and extensive community engagement process. Can you tell me what that means?
So Councilmember Juan has set up an engagement process. There've been a number of meetings so far, and there will be others, leading up to the certification into ULP in the coming months.
And has EDC, and is EDC just participating, or is this a process that you're investing in?
DCP is the primary.
Okay, so it's like a zoning process?
We're being, it's a zoning process, yeah.
Got it.
Yep.
So much to say on that. In terms of Brooklyn Marine Terminal, in your testimony, you list an enormous amount of projects, and I too really appreciate the flying around New York City. I need that every single day. And it, it's really striking to hear in some instances, you clearly note the city's investments in the projects, and other instances, not really, it's probably embedded. But what's really striking to me, where you even have mentioned them, like in Staten Island's North Shore, a $400 million city investment. The Climate Innovation Hub, which is one little piece, $100 million investment. East New York, $500 million investment. Hunts Point, $130 million from the city, $130 million from the state, and I'm sure that is just a little piece of the investment. And so I'm a little shocked when we talk about BMT, that is a regional, of regional importance, of importance obviously to our district, to our city, that the city has only committed $80 million to the investment. Can you tell me why that tremendous disparity in investment and importance?
So, first of all, there's a lot more in South Brooklyn that I didn't run through every project.
I know, and we could go through the list.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the Brooklyn Army Terminal alone, outside of the Climate Innovation Hub, another $100 million. Maid Campus, $100 million. SBMT, almost $100 million. So at, at BMT, to answer your question, there, as you know, had been little to no Port Authority investment for 50 years. As soon as we got control of the site about a year ago, the city committed $55 million for near-term bulkhead improvements. So, for example, at Pier 10, ships are already having trouble coming in because of the fendering system. And so we are moving to enter into contract with a several million dollar investment right now. This week, we are signing the contract to move forward with a $15 million all-electric crane for the facility. The rest of the.
Is that paid by the state, the $15 million?
City.
The city.
Yeah, the state had a separate $15 million commitment for cold storage. So that is, is 70 million there. As you know, there's a federal grant of $164 million, which if we're lucky enough to keep, requires $109 million city match. So that gets you closer to, that gets you closer to.
Is that in the budget?
It's not in the budget yet. As we've discussed, the Budget Director has made it clear, and City Hall on the other side, clear that they are prepared to do that match if they see that there is a master plan that's financially feasible moving forward. I would hope going forward and would love to see more city or state investment in the project overall.
And, and what has EDC requested from the state? Because my understanding is even their $15 million is the total of the state investment. Again, a port, a property, 122 acres, probably the, the. probably the, the smallest investment we've seen in economic development projects across the city, quite frankly. What has EDC asked from the state?
So both, both Senator Gennardis and Congressman Goldman, and I would ask you as well, have made their voices clear, you may have already, to the Governor's Office about the importance of more state investment here.
So have you asked for a specific number from the state?
I would certainly like to see, and what we have done on other big capital projects together is, is a match for the city investment. So you saw that on Spark, you saw that at Hunts Point, you're seeing that at Kingsbury Armory. Ideally for me, that would be a big step forward.
Is the request about 150 in match from the current investment? Two, so that's been the request from the state, is a $200 million match?
That is a discussion that has been had, yes.
Okay, so, okay. I guess, I, you know, I think we know all the problems of the BMT process, particularly that it was 122 acre property that's been rammed into a four-month planning process. And all the challenges at that. But also the, the, the investment is not at the level that reflects the importance to the city, quite frankly, of this property. And I get very excited when I see the Blue Highway concepts coming together. And we really want this to be successful. You have, you, you certainly have our commitment to fight through it, but I still find the investments in this quite paltry compared to, not only its economic importance, both for our surrounding community, but for the city as, as the city entirely. And when you look at it compared to other projects, it really significantly pales in comparison. And I, there's a real discord there that is very challenging for people to understand. Because we're seeing lots of commitments, but we're not seeing the actual investments. And we're seeing luxury housing on public land is what is going to actually subsidize this work. And that's just an unacceptable proposition for us. But I, one, one last question, Chair, if I may. In terms of, we have so many projects together, I could probably have you here for eight hours. But one thing really quickly. Some, in, in the line of investments, we know that EDC has mentioned investments into properties, including the King Solomon and other, the meat distribution area in, in Sunset Park. How, how has that been unfolding? I haven't heard much.
Is the, the wholesale meat market, yeah, in between, yes, absolutely. We have been working closely with the tenants there. We are now fully leased up, I believe. And have scheduled a number of shorter-term capital projects. You know, we've got some great tenants there, great local employers. And we're eager to see that facility be modernized further and grow.
Great. So I guess we'll, we'll get further updates. Thank you, Chair.
Recognizing Councilmember Nurse.
Thank you, Chair. How you doing? Good afternoon. I just had a couple, it is on, I'll be louder, sorry. I just had a couple of questions. If you could put on record a status update on the work of the plazas over in Broadway Junction. I know you mentioned in your testimony, but if you could elaborate just kind of where you all are in the process for the record.
Yeah, those are, moving along in pre-design phase, a big step, as you know, to securing the kind of public realm we want around the subway station as relocating the NYPD presence. And have appreciated the conversations we've had with your office and collaboration on that. That's, that's huge to move them, to really get the kind of open space that we want. We will be selecting a design firm shortly in the coming months and are moving forward. The funding is there, as is the MTA funding.
Okay. And do, do you know if you have a number of MWBEs who've applied for that design?
RFP is out or about to go out. And so in every one of those, we work very hard to make sure that there are applicants who are MWBE as lead, or they're brought in as subs to the prime.
Okay, great. And I know we have a bi-monthly public realm working group where the community members come and agencies come. I think we've been trying to figure out how to land a, a website somehow that has the commitments that are, you know, be able to track what's coming and what we're doing. So we're looking forward to getting that online soon. I can't remember if it landed with EDC hosting it, or what Yating.
That's a great idea. Let me look into that.
We've been really harping on that to include what kind of local hires are coming out of that. We don't expect to get local hires out of the MTA work, sadly. But it would be great to see if we can get some targets for the plaza work where you all have discretion. I had a question about, and I'm, I'm sorry if you covered this, Chair. The basement ADU one-stop shop. Can you tell me a little bit more about why EDC is, is hosting that? Or what that is?
Honestly, that's the first time I've heard of it, so let me look into it and get back to you.
Well, it was in the committee report, so it would be great to find out why, what EDC's role is with that. And then, the only other thing I would say is I, I see also that, the partnership with OpenAI. And, you know, I just want to express caution and concern for partnering with a platform that is right now being accused and sued for taking the work of entrepreneurs, artists, their ideas, their work for their own gain. And this kind of brings into question who the city is partnering with in terms of undermining our creative class that's here that we celebrate. And it might be at odds with our goals. So that's it.
Thank you so much to the councilmembers for asking questions. I'm gonna just jump into, for a couple more with around City of Yes. City of Yes committed $2 billion in infrastructure investments to accompanying zoning changes and anticipated growth across the city. Does EDC's preliminary capital plan include any new investments as part of the City of Yes's infrastructure commitments?
I do not believe any of the City of Yes capital monies are flowing through EDC, but I will check that and get back to you.
Great. And considering the role of the EDC's Neighborhood Development Fund has played in financing infrastructure associated with neighborhood growth, why hasn't any additional funding been added? And would you have liked to see if anywhere?
Almost all of our really big projects have neighborhood infrastructure associated with them. So it may not be showing up in exactly that fund, but actually showing up in the capital lines of, of each of the projects. So just to name a few, you know, our work on the North Shore. Certainly our, our work at BMT will include that. Our work at Hunts Point, our work at Kingsbury Armory, Spark, et cetera.
Okay. The City of Yes City for All Plan also included significant investments for affordable housing development and preservation in the city. Does EDC anticipate playing a role in financing or developing affordable housing as a result of the changes to the city's zoning resolution with City of Yes?
Yes, but primarily the way that EDC participates in the affordable housing, in, in affordable housing development is through RFPs of city land, where the project is not going into HPD's tax-exempt pipeline, which means a wait of five to 10 years before the project gets built. EDC is able to leverage the RFP to essentially cross-subsidize through the value of the land what would look like a 485X project or, or above.
Okay. And are there any particular projects that you're currently looking at that fall into that?
Yes, Coney Island West, 100 Gold, Gansbord Street, Stapleton B4, B5, just to name a few.
Okay, great. And we've also been joined by Councilmember Bacher. Did EDC's capital program receive any of the $2 billion in housing investments that the administration included in the City of Yes package?
I do not believe any of those funds are flowing through our capital project.
Okay, thank you. And just to move over to revenue to the general fund. Over the last couple of fiscal years, EDC has been contributing less and less to the general fund. What programs and initiatives do you think are causing the decline? And is it because EDC's costs have increased or activity has decreased?
Yeah, so EDC's revenues primarily come, the vast majority of them come from the land that we manage on behalf of the city. It's about 60 million square feet, 66 million square feet of land. Some of that is just a land lease. So like Metro Tech is an EDC land lease, some of the sites in Times Square, EDC land lease. And then some that we actively manage. So the Brooklyn Army Terminal, Hunts Point are examples of, of those. There are then sales of land or long-term leases with upfront payments. So in order for EDC to function as an entity, some substantial portion of those funds come to EDC. So that is in part the way that we close the gap on the funding of the ferries, just as an example. So that is typically a conversation with the Office of Management and Budget when we have a sale or a long-term lease with an upfront payment about how much just goes in the city fund and how much goes to fund EDC. So that's why you have some variability from one year to the next.
Got it. And has there been a, a net decline in any income over the years for EDC?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. Every year is a little bit different, but, you know, and not every year do we have a big sale or upfront lease payment.
When EDC calculates its net loss or income, does it factor in expenses and revenue generated from programs at Brooklyn Navy Yard or other component units? For example, the Brooklyn Navy Yard had an operating loss of 6.8 million, but a change in net position in 2024 of 21.4 million, driven largely by an increase in capital city contributions of 45 million. Similarly, the Trust for Governor's Island had an operating loss of 28.3 million in 2024. However, city capital contributions were 35.6 million. Are these kind of offsets in component units accounted for in contributions to the city's general fund?
We have no interconnection from a budget point of view with, with the Navy Yard or with the Trust for Governor's Island. What we do have for the first time is a formal programmatic partnership. So for years, EDC has invested in innovation projects at the Navy Yard, particularly at the New Lab. What we have now through the Harbor Climate Collaborative is a formalized MOU where we are partnering together, piloting technologies across our three campuses. I mean, it's, it's mind-boggling how big these campuses are, 600 acres, 10 million square feet of space. All of us targeting very similar pieces of the climate strategy. You know, Exchange is more research and development. Navy Yard is more mature companies. At the Climate Innovation Hub, we're going to be targeting more early-stage and startup. But those companies have the ability to use our physical assets, our land or our water, to collaborate at each of the three different sites. So for instance, there's a company called Pliant at the Navy Yard right now that does underwater robots. And so they're working both at land, at bat, underwater, Navy Yard, and at the Climate Exchange. You know, it seems like a very simple thing, but in the past, that kind of level of cooperation was not happening.
That's great to hear that that's how we're utilizing the programs. And then, just my last question in this space. In fiscal 2016, EDC had a net income of $100 million, much larger than any other years. Do we know what the reason for that was? Have we reflected back and seen if there's any way we can get back to those levels or what were the larger?
FY 2016?
Yes.
My guess is that it was a couple of big sales that, that occurred.
Yeah, that's what I would assume too. And then before I break for another round of questions for members, just some, some questions around the World Cup. The preliminary plan includes $20 million in EDC's budget for the World Cup. OMB testified that this funding was to hold, and I quote, "fan events for economic development purposes," end quote. And that EDC performed its own return to the city model. OMB told the Finance Committee that the council would receive that analysis and explain how it landed on the $20 million. Can you share with us the model of how EDC concluded $20 million was the right amount to invest in fan events for the World Cup?
In the instance of the World Cup, when New York and New Jersey were bidding to host, be a host city, one of numerous ones across the country, there was an economic impact analysis done by a third party. We went outside to a third party. Often we do these in-house using different, you know, established models. So for this one, we went outside and it showed a very, very substantial economic return to both New York and New Jersey, but particularly to New York, because this is where so many of the people will come to then go out to the Meadowlands and see the games at MetLife. So both New York and New Jersey are making a direct contribution to that host committee and their operations, which include Fan Fest things on both sides of the harbor, but particularly in New York City, because this is where most of the people will be. And that was the rationale for the $20 million commitment.
And arguably, the World Cup is one big fan event. Do you think that the use of tax levy is appropriate for fan events associated with the World Cup?
I do, because these kinds of events generate enormous sponsorship opportunities that help pay for the event being here in the first place. And again, the overall economic, positive economic impact of having, you know, both some of the preliminary games, the semifinal games and the final in New York City. The, the net value to New York City is massive. And I'll, we'll coordinate with OMB to make sure that you see that analysis.
That would be great. I did request it at the finance hearing and they chucked it up to you folks to hand it over to us.
Okay, we're on it.
And just in the same vein of different tax arguments on benefits, in the past couple of years, I've had, the city has had conversations around hotels and hoteliers and how to utilize different types of, either the, like, hotel occupancy taxes, reducing it, or using those ways to see if there could be a benefit for our hotels and bringing those workers back to work in the hotels. Have we spoken with the administration at all to look at a hotel occupancy tax evaluation on whether or not that could be beneficial to the hotels in anticipation of the FIFA World Cup?
I have not been in those conversations and EDC has not been asked to study that. Typically, as it relates to hotels, NYC tourism handles that because it's, it's in their, in their bailiwick.
Okay. And I will break again for councilmember questions, and I'd like to call on Councilmember Aviles.
Thank you. In terms of, sorry. In terms of, can you speak to us a little bit about how EDC supports MWBEs to ensure that they're growing? And in particular, I'm thinking about a very specific instance at BAT that EDC has invested in its growth, but is now seemingly choking out this business because it's decided a pier can be used for generating revenue outside of maritime, but for concert, as a concert venue. But can you talk to me generally about how EDC is supporting its MWBEs?
Sure. We're really proud of our work around MWBEs. I think we awarded $235 million last year to MWB contractors. I think that's a roughly 35% rate. And then on top of that, we have two programs that focus on small startup MWBEs. So one is called Waterfront Pathways, particularly focused on getting MWBEs into construction substations and subsectors in which they are not in right now, particularly waterfront work. So this is relevant to work at SBMT or future Blue Highway, or hopefully at BMT. And then Construct NYC, where we have a pre-approved list of vendors that have gone through a training program with us that can access contracts for under $3 million. We also have the Founder Fellows, which is overwhelmingly diverse entrepreneurs in the three sectors that we focus on. And so those are, those are some of the entrepreneurship programs we have. The small business you're referring to. And so those are, those are some of the entrepreneurship programs we have. The small business you're referring to that runs party boats at the Brooklyn Army Terminal, there has been a concern there about safety. This isn't just about revenues, but we are happy to work with you on that. We know that they are a local business. And there should be ways that we can both meet their needs and also be able to do the kinds of larger events. There are some of which are purely revenue generating for EDC, and some of which are community events. We do tens of millions of dollars of community events every year.
You just made my blood pressure go up real high. I will, I'll talk to you about that. The public safety issue is not a real issue. What is an issue is there's a business that you've grown and you should be very proud of that operates seasonally, and there's only twelve weekends they could operate. EDC has effectively removed four to eight of those weekends. How do you run a temporary business when you cannot run on the only weekends in the year because EDC has decided it's holding those weekends for concert or community events? Right? It's a challenge. So I'll follow up with you.
Happy to talk more about it.
It's not a safety issue. It is a planning, but I believe, I believe there's a path. We can get there, but hopefully we get there before the businesses shudders because we couldn't find something more, we couldn't be more aggressive on it. In terms of, sorry, just lost my questions. See what happens when your blood pressure goes up? You can't read. So the mayor launched a community hiring effort to be in compliance with the state law that requires forty percent of labor hours to be performed by people who live in NYCHA. I was curious how, how EDC has been implementing this effort in its economic development projects, in particular, anything related to BMT property. How much of any of those jobs have, have been allocated or, or, I can't find my words now, NYCHA residents are employed by?
Yeah, I mean, the city has had a, a citywide program run out of the mayor's office of, of talent and workforce development and with SBS, with job fairs across the city. EDC has not been a part of that. What we have been a part of is focusing on those areas where we have assets and significant investments happening. So that's South Brooklyn with the Economic Mobility Network we're setting up. It's East New York with a, a, a similar mobility network and Hunts Point the same, where the idea is to make sure wherever possible, we're working with local nonprofits to prescreen and place local residents in, in the jobs. At BMT, we're very mindful of that, a positive outcome of this process must involve workforce development. That's part of why we're working with the Red Hook Initiative on one of our advisory councils. We are doing in-depth work now with the leaders of Red, of Red Hook East and West to make sure there is a plan, both for current work-ready residents of those buildings and students. And within our plan, I think you may have seen it on Friday, but we're going to be talking more about it in the coming meetings, would be a very significant workforce development center onsite.
Do you, do you have any, and I know actually you mentioned earlier, you're going to be producing a report related to this local hires question that I'm constantly asking. Is within that any reporting around current NYCHA residents getting employed at any of the Sunset Park Red Hook assets?
I'm not sure we are able to ID exactly what building folks come out of, but I will check. So the, the data that you'll see in the Sunset Park Annual Report that we're going to put out for the first time includes data tracked through W2s, but also tenant interviews. And typically you can ask a business for zip code data. They're not legally required to provide it, but sometimes they do. And overwhelmingly, that data shows good numbers, you always can do better on, on local hire. I do not think it specifically would show who's coming out of East and West as an example, but I will, I will ask the team.
Or even probably zip code. We could, we could figure
Yeah.
out more or less by zip code. On the Red Hook side, I haven't heard very much mention of, I want to know about the current employment numbers
Yeah, understood.
for current residents. We could talk all about the future projection and all the fancy numbers, but currently that would be great to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask some questions about capital funds. EDC has several funds in its capital plan. Historically, these funds were used in the future for various projects based on city priorities. As the recipients of these funds are decided later, the city council is not always aware of all the projects when the budget is adopted. The current capital commitment plan shows that the Housing Fund, Tenant Improvement Fund, and the Manufacturing and Industrial Investment Fund are not funded. Do you have plans to bring them back? And can you help us understand the governance structure of these funds?
Can you say it again? The Tenant Fund?
Yeah, we have the, sorry, Housing Fund, Tenant Improvement Fund, and Manufacturing and Industrial Investment Funds.
Yeah, I think those are, are funds that may have been active way in the past, but have not been active for some time. Typically, our capital projects, you know, our, our capital funds are specific to projects. So as an example, you know, at Spark, there's five hundred million dollars for the CUNY schools that we'll be helping to build, a hundred and sixty-four million for SCA, and then additional funds for OCME and H and H to move into the private development campus. We have, you know, four hundred million dollars on the North Shore. We have an ask-in, it hasn't been funded yet, on Arcony West project. So it tends to happen, you know, project by project as opposed to sort of general funds.
Okay. So can I follow up to see?
Sure, we'll follow up and confirm.
If these are just defunct because they were associated with the Sirm project?
Yeah.
Great. Capital funding for Phase Two of the Willetts Point redevelopment is two hundred and sixty-two million in the first five years of the capital commitment plan, with just ten million committed in the latter half of the planned period. Why is the plan so front-loaded for these projects? What will these capital commitments support in the Willetts Point development?
Yeah, so we're constantly working with OMB to line up our capital needs in the year that they actually happen. And so that means that capital funds may be laid out over a number of years. There may be an instance in which we don't need the money, you know, say until twenty twenty-seven, so the money starts in twenty seven, goes twenty-eight, twenty-nine. In the case of Willetts Point, that project is actively, the housing is coming out of the ground in Phase One. We already did Phase One infrastructure. We're doing Phase Two infrastructure right now, and the stadium is coming out above ground on, on a portion of Phase Two. So the reason we need that in the near-term years is we're actually literally spending it right now.
Okay, great. And what about the additional phases and the funds?
So beyond Phase Two of public infrastructure funding for Willetts, I do not believe there is other capital fund allocated as of now.
Okay. And then I'd like to just chat about some of the RFPs. EDC recently released an RFP for the development of a Hundred Gold Street, a city-owned site. The recent Request Seeks Proposals to Develop Mixed-Income Housing. Why was EDC chosen to issue the RFP and how did you work with the administration to select this site? And is there any additional funding in EDC's budget for this project?
So this is a good example where on a city-owned asset, and, and Gansbord Square is, is another one that we're working with Councilmember Bajra on, where the city, you know, is through mandate from City Hall to like develop housing wherever you can on underutilized city-owned assets. Now, the reason I would use the word underutilized in the case of a Hundred Gold is the building is literally falling apart. If you work at HPD, mold is falling on your head. I mean, it's, I don't know if you remember the old two fifty Broadway, but it was a lot worse than that. And so HPD and their six other entities in there, but HPD is the biggest one by, by far, are going to have to move soon, or you're going to have to renovate the building in place around them. So that would cost an enormous amount, hundreds of millions of dollars for the city to sort of renovate in place as you move your people around within the building. So the notion was, let's decant the building, move all of those uses either into other city-owned assets that are underutilized, office space, or into new, into rental office space in the private sector. That gives a private developer then the opportunity to come in, take down the existing building, build a new building that could be host to a thousand new residents. Some of the money that comes off of that will pay for the relocation of the city agencies. So at this time, there is no additional money put into the city's budget. Could that be an issue in the future? It is possible, but it's not needed today.
And can we expect to see any EDC issue, see the EDC issue any more RFPs for residential projects on city-owned assets?
We just put out a lot of them, and I do not anticipate any others in the next few months.
Okay, great. And then lastly, last March, EDC issued an RFP for a one hundred million Climate Innovation Hub at Brooklyn Arm, Brooklyn Army Terminal. Can you update the committee on the status of the RFP and the timeline for establishing the hub? And does the prelim include any funding for this project?
Yes, it does. We are very close to publicly announcing the operators of the Climate Innovation Hub. It will include both incubation and acceleration, as well as workforce development, local outreach in the community, in particular around workforce development, but also entrepreneurship.
Thank you for your response. I am going to turn it over to Councilmember Bajra for questions.
Good afternoon. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Thanks. As you know, obtaining shore power for the Manhattan Cruise Ship Terminal is one of my top priorities, and it's so important for our residents because when cruise ships are docked, their diesel generators are running and they emit toxic fumes that waft into our neighborhoods, specifically Hell's Kitchen. And we've been working closely with you on this and recently, the plan changed somewhat when EDC decided that you are now going to pursue a, a master plan for the cruise ship terminal to plan for the next seventy-five years of receiving cruise ships at those terminals. And that pushed out the timeline for when we can expect ships to be able to plug in when they're in port. I understand that this summer, you're going to be coming to us with this, a master plan for these cruise ship terminals. What can be done now, and I know we're going to be meeting about this in the near future, what could be done now with respect to preparing for shore power? Because we know that additional capacity will be needed on, on land for the electrical grid, substation capacity. What can start now rather than waiting for the master plan to come together?
Yes, appreciate your advocacy on this, and this is something that ports all over the world are moving fast on and also struggling with because this is relatively new technology. We have made some big steps forward, and it's, it's too bad that Councilmember Avila said to leave, but we're in constant contact with her about the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal and implementing a mobile harbor JIB that can access most of the boats coming in there with shore power. And we expect by the summer to have the infrastructure in place so that all ships can, can plug in. What's different there than at Manhattan Cruise is there is a very significant substation already on site bringing the power. So what we've been doing actively is working with ConEd to make sure that there is capacity. We have gotten positive responses there. Now the question is siting for where this substation will go. I know that we have said we want to make sure that this is done within the context of a master plan because one of the things we discovered when we were seeking the siting previously with ConEd is understanding that the subsurface conditions at eighty-eight and ninety, ninety were deteriorating quicker than we thought. Hence, we've got a master plan, this thing together, and make sure the substation's going in the right place in the context of that master plan, and frankly, also line up all of the bunny that we will need to do, which will be, include both a new public sector ask, but also an ask, a significant ask of the private cruise operators, not just on the per-passenger fees that we've discussed with you, but a significant capital investment in exchange for a long-term lease. So I, I appreciate that there has been a delay. I'm not sure that in reality, it's as long as it might seem in order to get the master plan done before we go ahead and procure on the substation, but we will be back to you in a few months on this, and we understand that is a very high priority of yours in the community.
If you had to give a ballpark estimate of how much time it's going to take, what, what year do you realistically anticipate cruise ships will be able to plug in at the Manhattan Cruise Ship Terminal?
I'm going to come back to you on that one. I mean, my guess is that, you know, whether, whether we were doing a master plan or not, you know, once you procure a big capital project like that, particularly using city capital dollars, as you know, it's a few years. So I want to get back to you with a more precise than just a few years. My hope is that not only do we have a master plan together in twenty-five, but we have put out an RFP for long-term operators there and partners. As you know, we have a long-term partnership with Ports America for the day-to-day operations of the port, but then there are those cruise lines coming in like MSC and Norwegian and Carnival, and there's no reason in my mind that in exchange for a very long-term commitment to use those peers and have their presence there, that they're, they should also be contributing to the long-term capital needed, including shore power. So I, I would hope that by the end of the year, we would be out with an RFP to determine who our partners are going to be on that project beyond Ports America.
Okay, two last bits and then I'll, I'll end. Just on the capital projects for waterfronts, the committee knows how involved EDC is with the city's waterways, and the preliminary capital commitment plan includes a one hundred and fifty-two million lump sum capital project for waterfront improvements. How does EDC decide to draw down on these capital funds for waterfront improvements? Are they for new projects or for projects currently underway that are funding on a year-to-year basis?
They're for a wide array of projects across the five hundred and twenty miles of the city. Some that are EDC managed, like Pier Thirty-Six, there's a very substantial project going on right now. We're in application for some work at the Manhattan Cruise Terminal. And then they're for other agencies where we do the work on their behalf, like Parks Department. And so, you know, we can get you a full list of all of those projects that make up the hundred million.
That would be really helpful. And can you explain why there's only one point four million committed for waterfront improvements in FY twenty-six?
One point four million?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me, given the number of projects we have, so let me check on that number.
Check back.
Yeah.
And then last year, we had a discussion about finding savings in the city's tax expenditures. We spend over three point three billion annually in tax breaks to encourage economic development in the city. While much of this represents commitments made years ago, many of the same tax incentive programs still remain on the books and are unchanged from when they were developed years and in some cases decades ago. Considering the limited resources we have, do you believe that each and every single one of the city's existing economic development tax incentives are working as efficiently as they could?
I do, by and large, I think they are working very well and are critical to our economic recovery right now and to growth in the future. So the work that we do through IDA Build and we put out a, our first annual report just for those two programs this year. It looks back about fifteen years. The positive impact of those programs is massive, and we'll make sure that we have in the record that report as well. There are other programs that are new, like the M-COR program, where we believe it will have a very positive long-term impact. have a very positive long-term impact. We talked about the analysis earlier. You know, time will tell. The council is certainly right to shine a spotlight on it and see where we are every year. Is it moving? On smaller business incentives, the main programs are initiated through the state legislature, so the Relocation Assistance Program, REAP, is a $3,000 per head for 12 years if you move into the city in most parts, except for midtown, or you move from midtown to the outer boroughs, so we don't lose those companies going to the suburbs or another part of the country. I know from my time in the Navy Yard Industry City that those programs are absolutely critical to the success along the Brooklyn waterfront, and I think you'd hear the same from chambers of commerce in Long Island City and in the Bronx and in Manhattan about the importance of them. So those programs, that program is up for reauthorization. The city has asked for it to be reauthorized, and it's also asked for a new tool called RACE. So we have an ongoing challenge despite the fact that jobs are going very, very well. Tax revenue is strong. We have 100 million square feet of vacant space. Space in luxury office buildings are doing very, very well. Everything else is not doing well, down about 10% the last couple of years. So what the RACE program does is for companies moving from outside New York City, taking over 20,000 square feet of space, that's a lot of space, in pre-2000 buildings, the older buildings that are hardest to lease, we will give them a $5,000 per employee tax break for 12 years. So richer than REAP, but really mirroring the moment in time in which we've got to move on that 100 million square feet of vacant space. Some of that is going to be converted to housing, but if I had to guess, maybe 10 million of it, that still leaves 90 million. So, you know, we've got to move to upgrade these older buildings and to help the ones that are leasing today lease better. That program would be capped if the state legislature passes it. I think it's a five-year cap with a certain dollar amount. So again, that will be one for the council to watch, and we're very hopeful that it passes the state legislature because it's really a tool that we think we need.
Great, thank you. And just for the committee's information, who in the city is ultimately responsible for ensuring that the economic tax breaks are relevant and efficient? Is it EDC or OMB?
I think it's EDC first and foremost because primarily, we're making the decisions. You know, in a program like REAP, we don't have, you know, it's as-of-right essentially, so DOF, Department of Finance, technically provides the break. OMB is very rigorous in reviewing all these programs, and we know that council oversight will be there as well, playing their appropriate role.
Great. Well, thank you, folks, for testifying today. I don't see any other questions from members, and you are adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or visual recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for the inclusion of the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, the budget for the New York City Economic Development Corporation. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.myc.gov within 72 hours of the close of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called in that order. Julie Coker, Michiko Grasso, Gregory J. Morris. Just, yep, press the button on the mic, and you may begin when ready.
Okay. Good afternoon, Majority Leader Ferris and members of the Economic Development Committee. I am Julie Coker, and I'm the President and CEO of New York City Tourism and Conventions. I thank you for this opportunity to share the current status of the city's tourism and hospitality industry and our efforts along with our government and private sector partners to revitalize the industry as we work for a full recovery. I would like to take a moment to provide a quick background of who we are and what we do as an organization. And it's, as the, we are, New York City Tourism is the official destination marketing organization and convention and visitors bureau for the Five Boroughs to New York City. Our mission is threefold: maximizing inbound travel, building economic prosperity, and spreading the dynamic image of Five Boroughs around the world. We're a 501(c)(6) not-for-profit member organization and represent the interest of 1,400 member businesses and organizations across the Five Boroughs. We are governed by a 81-member board, and I am going to skip ahead. Prior to the pandemic, 2019 was the 10th consecutive year of growth in the number of visitors importantly in visitor spend. The first of the pandemic, the first year of the pandemic hit our industry very hard. The good news is, as we sit here in 2025, five years later, there are things, things are looking much more positive. What I really want to highlight today is that in 2019, we forecasted to be at 76 million visitors in 2024. And while we are grateful and excited about the 64.5 million visitors that we had last year, as you can see, it is well below what we originally forecasted. And for those reasons, we are extremely concerned and want to just highlight that we need dedicated funding for this upcoming fiscal year so that we can be, we can remain competitive.
Please continue.
Okay. What I'd say is, as we plan for the next eight months of this year and into 2026, New York City is facing increased competition. Domestic visitors are traveling internationally again, and businesses are traveling, travelers are becoming more cautious as concerns about a recession swirl. And more importantly, first-tier meeting cities such as Dallas and Los Angeles and Vegas have bid funds that are making them also much more competitive for the meetings market. Where we really need to double down is that we need to take a look at the fact that we just recently adjusted our forecast for international travelers down 3%. And as we are all watching the conversations around tariffs unfold, there is a concern about our forecast that we just recently did, and we're hoping that we can hold those numbers. What's really important about the funding that we offer is that it supports community programs like New York Restaurant Week and New York Restaurant Week, New York Outings, I should say, which is a part of Restaurant Week, Hotel Week, and Must Attractions Week. And fiscal year 2026, without increased funding, we will cut, we will need to cut back on our global presence further and further, and this will reduce community programs and may have other lasting cuts that will essentially make New York City not competitive.
So, thank you for your testimony. You can continue.
Good afternoon, Chair Farias and members of the committee. I am Michiko Grasso, Vice President of External Affairs at Non-Traditional Employment Form Amendment or NEW. Thank you to the city council for your support of our work over the years. Most recently, we received funds from the Speaker's Initiative, the Young Women's Leadership Development, and Pride at Work. Our mission is to prepare, train, and place women in careers in the skilled construction, utility, and maintenance trades, helping them achieve economic independence and a secure future for themselves and their families. NEW also helps create a skilled workforce vital to economic development in the city. We provide a pathway to jobs that provide good pay, benefits, and safety protections. Through its core pre-apprenticeship training program, along with job placement and wraparound services, NEW lowers barriers to a male-dominated industry and supports women throughout their trade journey. Every year, we train approximately 350 individuals. According to a 2023 report from the U.S. Department of Labor's Women's Bureau, women are vastly underrepresented in critical infrastructure fields. Despite being 50% of the total workforce, only 4.2% make up the skilled construction trades occupations. There are also pay disparities for women in these fields, and further, the barriers for women entering the trades are many. So many more investments are needed in the workforce development sector. With the shift in federal funding, the city council funding is more important than ever. Investments in key programs such as the Job Readiness and Training Initiative are crucial for nonprofits such as ours. We recently submitted a request to this initiative to boost our new partnership with NICA through its REIS program. We plan to reach out and serve NICA residents in districts of elected officials whom we work with, and your funding will maximize the impact of this partnership. We also need more flexible dollars for our emergency fund, which helps tradeswomen who encounter unplanned expenses that may prohibit the continuation of their work or force their resignation. Support includes housing, transportation, union initiation dues, and utilities assistance. There are many opportunities available to women in the trades, and we thank the committee for considering investing in this sector. Your investment will return a hundredfold. Thank you for your partnership, and we look forward to building a brighter future for our tradeswomen with you.
Good afternoon, Majority Leader. Thank you for making this time. It's much appreciated. I always appreciate the presentations from EDC because I learn about where all the jobs are anticipated, and all I can think to myself is, as the CEO of the New York City Employment and Training Coalition, is how it's possible to ensure that the workforce development strategies are in place, to ensure that those particular jobs in every particular region are actually accessible to local job seekers. True, by the way, that New York City is experiencing record-high employment levels, but what we don't talk about, as you know, is wages. We don't talk about quality jobs, and we don't talk about career advancement, and we certainly aren't spending the time that we should addressing the outrageously high unemployment rates for black men and young adults in New York City. Economic development cannot thrive without a skilled, diverse workforce to support business growth and innovation, and workforce development cannot be effective without clear pathways to high-quality jobs and expanding industries. Workforce funding, economic development investments, and philanthropic efforts must all be intertwined to ensure that our most effective programs and initiatives exist to create on-ramps for new workers, reskilling, upskilling options, like those provided by folks on the panel, and second act careers for those in need of those opportunities. As identified by NYC ETC, the organization of 220 members I'm proud to represent as part of its workforce development agenda released just last week, we are hoping that this council, led by this committee, ensures that making workforce development a core requirement of publicly funded economic development initiatives is at the fore of our focus to ensure that those programs are resourced and that we continue to focus on tracking and evaluating private sector investment and workforce solutions. So we don't just have a presentation about the number of jobs, we can actually talk about who receives them, how well they're doing over time, and how it is that they continue to grow in those opportunities. Workforce development is not an isolated social service but an economic imperative. Economic growth is meaningless if it does not translate into opportunities for those facing the highest barriers to employment. I know you know that, and I'm grateful for this time.
Thank you all for testifying. Just from the perspectives of NEW and NYC ETC, how frequently are you hearing from the Economic Development Corporation or any one of the community projects that we're seeing that they're managing or working on in terms of either getting more folks into the workforce or asking for your collaboration on a varying degree of different groups that are on the ground that can help with the pipeline and/or other deficiencies that the EDC might not be able to have but need community partnership?
I was very grateful to have been part of the, to have been called upon to support what was referenced during the earlier presentation, the Economic Mobility or Economic Network Development RFP that EDC put forward. In other words, allowing me the opportunity to talk about what it would take to create economic mobility networks in New York City based on the history of the New York City Employment Training Providers. We did that in partnership with EDC in talking about that, how to make that possible. And we're grateful that those particular, that RFP went forward and has identified in two different pockets of New York City, there's more that needs to be done. That said, and certainly as someone who has championed the Spark Campus Project, as and has been active in supporting and championing that project, as someone who has talked about the cruise ships and the plans on the West Side, as someone who has championed and focused on what is happening at the Kingsbridge Armory and the plan for that for the future, I do feel like I have had the opportunity to say workforce development counts. As you know, unless it's invested in, unless the actual scaffolding is in place to ensure that opportunity is available, it's not going to hold true. So from my perspective, I feel like I'm being called into conversations, and what it is that I'm putting forward about what our coalition believes workforce development should and could look like has been received by EDC. I think the complexity is about what is the investment that that means over time so we can actually see and manage the results of that particular focus and that interest, and that's the part where I would say there's still much work to be done.
Definitely, we can connect more with the EDC. Just out of transparency, COVID did badly to our organization, and we were one of those nonprofits that did not do well because who can teach carpentry virtually? And we went through a lot of staff transitions during the period, and we actually welcomed our first tradeswoman and first person of color, Leah Rambo, to become our president last year. So we are definitely eager to continue our partnership and, you know, really dig deep into this partnership with the EDC.
Yeah, I'd love to just keep in touch on that as I'm sure we still have EDC folks here that are logging and taking this information in. I think it's important, especially for folks like NEW or for your organization that has, you know, hundreds of partners that can be on the ground, be infiltrated into a lot of these projects, and were directly impacted by being hired on some of the development projects that we have that can both assist you folks and the city be able to track its actual outcomes and metrics. So I appreciate that. And then I just have a question around the last statement that you read, Ms. Coker, on the resources that will be needed without increased funds, what our global impact is going to look like and what that means for the city of New York. Can you give us an idea of prospectively what could be new needs that the, that NYCTC has, and what that means in terms of percentages or negative outcomes for the city of New York if those aren't met?
Sure. So currently, we have had the same contract with the city since 2006, and that has been the 21.1. We are currently pegged, and so that contracted amount right now for fiscal year 2026 is looking to be at 17.45 million. And so that will definitely, unfortunately, cause us to look at first, I shouldn't say first, we'll look at international presence. New York City has 17 international offices as we should because part of our roles and responsibility is to promote New York City internationally, and so currently, we only have 14. Prior to COVID, we had 17, so we'll definitely have to look at that, and we wouldn't be able to maintain the 14 that we have. The reason why international visitation is extremely important to New York City is because they stay longer and they spend more, and it's also an opportunity to get those visitors into the Five Boroughs, so they're not just Manhattan, they'll go all over. The other thing that we will definitely have to look at is actual staff, and we may have to do layoffs, if not job eliminations, depending on, depending on the overall budget. The concern for all of us with that is, obviously, as we know, visitors are, they're an export. They come to the destination, they leave money, and they leave. And so not having the proper funding to have appropriate marketing, strategic marketing and sales programs to do the job so that we can promote New York City, we've never questioned, we don't have an awareness problem in New York City. We do have an opportunity where if we're not marketing at the level that we should to our competitors, you're not able to get to actually buy. So it's one thing to say, if you're in UK, I know where New York City is, it's a It's another actually to push the button and actually make a visit and schedule a trip. And so the concern that we have is, as we're looking at the landscape today and the potential of the tariffs and the impact that they could have, as well as increased competition from other domestic cities, we could lose our competitive advantage on both the domestic side as well as the international side. And that will lead to, lead to potential jobs, obviously, that we create. We have 388,000 jobs in the city that are tourism-related, so those could be impacted, and certainly the tax dollars that we generate to the city.
And to the peg that we took last year, I'll include myself in the general, we as the chair, those three offices were closed because of the peg?
They were part of the, they were a part of the reductions that we had to make because of a decreased budget.
Okay, and so are part of our new needs for your organization going to be to go back up to the 21.4? Or are we asking for additional to ensure that we have expansive?
We are asking for an additional. So we're asking for an additional, our new needs ask is 7 million for fiscal year 2026 to go beyond the 20, the contracted amount of 21. And that's for a number of reasons, as we all know. And I heard when we walked in, you were talking about FIFA. So we've got international events. And again, similar to what EDC was saying, is that the game may be played in New Jersey, but we certainly want visitors here. But we also want to be able to bring journalists as well to experience and feel the city so that they can then promote out. And the other that we want to do is make sure that we are competitive when we're talking about the meetings and convention market. And then lastly, all of the work that we do around the Five Boroughs and getting folks into the city and then into the Five Boroughs and supporting those community vibrancy programs that we do, all of that will be covered if we're able to have that 7 million ask.
And then just my last question for you. In terms of the conversations you're having with the administration on your new needs ask of 7 million, have they began? Have we received any feedback? What's, what are my efforts going to look like towards June?
We have submitted our new needs ask, and we have received some questions back. What I would say of some of the questions that we are facing are, it isn't an à la carte menu, if you will. So if we do this or that, it really is a comprehensive. So in order to keep the staff that we have and also do the work that we need to do from a marketing and sales perspective, that entire 7 million is needed, especially as we're going into 2025, the balance of this year, and of course fiscal year 2026, where we are going to be on a world stage with having FIFA here. So all of the efforts that we have, I believe that they understand, and we are certainly not tone deaf and know that there is a lot of ask on the budget. But really, because we are revenue generating and there's a return on investment for the dollars that are invested into travel and tourism, we do think that the ask is reasonable.
I appreciate that response. That's what I was going to end with. I think each of you up here are worth investments as all of you provide revenue generation, whether that's with jobs and outcomes in our small economies or impacting our larger tourism budget that increases both small and large economies in the city. So that's, those are the only questions I have. Thank you all for coming and being on the panel. This panel is now dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we, seeing no one else signed up to testify in person, I'm going to now return, turn over to virtual panelists. If you are in person and are not signed up to testify, please go to the sergeant at arms to request an in-person testimony. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant at arms will set the timer at two minutes and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. I will now call our first virtual panelist. Milat Suyum.
You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Chairperson, audience and distinguished members of the New York City Council on Economic Development. My name is Milat Suyum, and I'm the Director of Political Affairs and Strategic Partnerships at the New York City Network of Worker-Owned Cooperatives, also known as NICNOK. We are the member-led local trade association representing worker cooperative businesses and democratic workplaces in New York City metropolitan area. I'm here alongside my colleagues from the Democracy at Work Institute and the Center for Family Life, and our advocacy council members representing 11 other organizations that make up the Worker Cooperative Business Development Initiative, asking the New York City Council to continue supporting the expansion of worker ownership in next year's budget and firmly into the future. Since the inception of the initiative, we've created over 200 new cooperative businesses and over 1,200 new jobs that are not only providing higher hourly wages, but also building wealth and assets for individuals who are overwhelmingly by pop women and immigrants. We have seen firsthand how the initiative has to bolster our sector, strengthening existing cooperative businesses and creating new ones. The initiative partners have collectively worked to create a comprehensive ecosystem of support for cooperative businesses that are not only ensuring the creation of new cooperatives in low-income areas, but also the technical assistance needed to sustain businesses and create jobs, as well as the education and outreach needed for communities, interested entrepreneurs and allied organization. We did a lot of work during the pandemic. We brought in over 20 million in grants and loans for cooperatives to keep them afloat. And we did this with a 3.7 million budget. We are asking the City Council to enhance our funding to $5,097,082 in order for our initiative to really double down and do the essential work that's necessary for the long-term economic recovery for our cooperative businesses that's really necessary and needed to claw ourselves out of this crisis. We thank City Council for the opportunities to testify and hope that you will consider our budget priorities.
Your time has expired.
During this year's budget negotiation process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd now like to call Catherine Mersek.
You may begin.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify online today. My name is Catherine Mersek. I'm a worker-owner at Samam Kaya Yoga Back Care and Scoliosis Collective. We're a member of the New York City Network of Worker Co-ops, or NICNOK, which is, as you heard, Milat, a partner organization in the WCBDI initiative. Your support of our community of democratically-run businesses helps to protect and create jobs for women, immigrant workers and communities of color across the Five Boroughs and in a wide array of industries. I am testifying today to urge you to continue to support the great work of WCBDI, enhancing their funding to their ask, which the specific number is in my written testimony, 5.1 million approximately. And to support also commercial rent stabilization to protect New York City's workers and small businesses from displacement. My co-op, Samam Kaya, is a very special little studio in Chelsea specializing in therapeutic yoga for back care with classes online and in studio. I'm proud to say that my 19 other worker owners and I just celebrated 10 years of democratically running the studio together in the same space the whole time. To make yoga accessible to all ages and abilities, we use specialized rope walls and equipment, which incurred a hefty startup cost that we are still paying back. Our co-op business structure makes us unique among yoga studios in New York. And I believe it's one of the reasons we were more resilient throughout the pandemic than many of the other yoga studios which we sadly lost. Even though the pandemic forced us to close our physical space, we were able to band together and decide as a team how we would pivot, divide the labor. We worked together to keep the studio afloat, while we made sure our teachers who most needed to be working could keep teaching online and make ends meet. We were really grateful to have access to technical support from WCBDI partners and a couple of small grants that are specific to worker co-ops. One example is NICNOK's Cooperative Sustainability Fund that allowed us to pay for consulting sessions with another co-op.
Your time has expired.
Okay, there's more in my written testimony. Just to wrap things up, please enhance WCBDI's funding and please support commercial rent stabilization to ensure a just recovery in New York City for our wonderful community of small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. And just a friendly reminder with the two minutes to speak, the hearing topic today is the budget for the New York City Economic Development Corporation. For the organizations that are asking for expansions, please email those requests on the funding or the speakers' budget requests to my office so I can have those handy. I'd now like to call on Ofelia Salgado.
You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you for your time today, Chair Amanda Farias and distinguished members of the New York City Council on Economic Development. My name is Ofelia Salgado. I am a corporate business developer at Sunset Parks Center for Family Life. We are a 47-year-old social service organization committed to helping low-income Brooklyn families to build sustainable futures. I'm here today to respectfully request that the City Council continue its support for Worker Cooperative Business Development Initiative, as again my colleague Milat already mentioned, by allocating $5.1 million to the fiscal year 2026. Since joining WCBDI in 2014, CFL has incubated 27 cooperative businesses, businesses and domestic work, empowering over 600 women to control their economic future. Each year, we train over 400 participants in business management and cooperative leadership and provide over 250 business consultations, ensuring the stability and the growth of the existing cooperatives. With your support, we've expanded our impact and now reach every corner of New York City, so we're not limited to Brooklyn. And notably, we launched Up and Go, an online platform where clients book services from worker-owned cooperatives. Since 2017, Up and Go has generated over $3 million, directly benefiting more than 100 families. So cooperative members now earn $33 an hour. That's more than double the typical $16 an hour for domestic work in New York City. And importantly, very important, it has completely eliminated any wage theft, ensuring safe and equitable working conditions. These achievements are possible only with the continued support of the New York City Council. Your investment in worker-owned cooperatives is crucial in combating economic inequality and building resilient communities. On behalf of Center for Family Life, thank you for your commitment to economic equity, and we look forward to your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to call on Antu Noguyen.
You may begin.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Farias and distinguished members of the New York City Council Committee on Economic Development. My name is Antu Nguyen, and I am the Director of Strategic Partnerships at Democracy at Work Institute, a member of the Worker Cooperative Business Development Initiative, or WCBI for short. Thanks to City Council's investment over the last 10 fiscal cycles, we've provided significant benefit to aspiring business owners and become a model of innovative and inclusive economic development that has been modeled across the country now. Our initiative has created and supports resilient employment and business ownership opportunities unlike any other in New York, with, where we provide critical support to small businesses, workers and recent migrants, connecting them to business ownership and employment opportunities, especially when alternative routes to employment and business ownership are unavailable. Some key achievements in the past few years have included the successful launch of AfroLingual, an interpretation and translation cooperative that provides language support in over 10 African languages. This language access has been key to offering on-ramps to economic and social mobility for African migrants and is currently being used as a model for other interpretation cooperatives across the country. In addition, the establishment of Radiate Consulting, which is a professional services consulting cooperative made up of CUNY graduates, which builds capacity for immigrant services organizations and small businesses, including administration, bookkeeping, curriculum development and trainings. The worker owners have deep experience in these spaces and have come from these communities themselves, so they know it best. In the past few years, Radiate Consulting has doubled in size and reached profitability within the first two years of its launch. It's also become a model for workforce development for young immigrant professionals that is currently being replicated by the city of San Francisco, amongst other cities that are looking to see how they can bring young people into the workforce. Since its inception in fiscal year 2015, WCBDI has created more than 1,000 jobs and pathways to business ownership, created more than 200 new worker cooperative businesses that offer higher hourly wages, better working conditions, and importantly, build wealth and equity for workers. It has reached more than 10,000. ... with education and technical assistance services. I have more to share in my written testimony, but we urge City Council to continue investing in worker cooperatives in New York City in fiscal year 26 to the tune of $5.09 million, which will provide for the startup of 31 new worker cooperative small businesses and over 100 new jobs, as well as technical assistance and education, reaching over 2,000 existing startup and aspiring cooperative entrepreneurs. Thank you again, and appreciate the time that you've given me for testimony.
Thank you so much. Please make sure to email over your testimony so we have everything on record. I'd like to call up next Christopher Leon Johnson.
Uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, hello Chair, hello Chair Farias. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I want to show my support to the rise lines when it comes to the omnibus situation. I think the rise lines need to start calling on the NYPD.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Leon Johnson, you have to remain on topic. This is solely on the budget of the New York City Economic Development Corporation.
I know, but I'm trying to put, show our support while saying that the City Council needs to start telling the NYPD to stop these impoveries at the busiest stations in the city of New York. You guys have the money to fund the NYPD.
Your testimony currently doesn't have anything to do with the hearing topic?
This had a lot to do economic development.
Okay, here we go. Let's talk about the economic development component.
Hey, this had a lot to do economic development. You're cutting my time, okay? Because if this, if this works in those impoverished communities, these people are able to save money and they're able to go and support like NYCFC, go to the NBA games. At the same time, it's able to start buying, be able to use that money and buy city bike memberships. And that will help the city out a lot because everybody knows the Lyft supports the Bronx Democratic Party. Everybody knows that. Now, I want to make this clear about the bike lanes, that we need to, yeah, we need to fund the DOT, but they should not obligate fund the DOT for only bike lanes. What about the deliveryistas?
As I've already mentioned, DOT is not being heard at this budget hearing. This is solely on the Economic Development Corporation.
This had a lot to do economic development because without, this is about infrastructure. It's all infrastructure, deliveryista hubs. Put the deliveryista hub outside of City Hall. Why, why hasn't the City Council implemented a plan to really put it outside City Hall? It's been approved by the Department of Planning. It's been approved by.
Your time has expired.
Like, you got to my time, but I mean, that's what I got to say. But thank you. You got to my time.
Thank you so much. We have now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify. If we have inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip. If we've inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. And a member of our staff will call on you in the order of your hands raised. Seeing none, I will now like to note again that written testimony will be received and reviewed in full by committee staff, and it may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. And with that, this committee hearing is now adjourned.